Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Happy Tuesday.
Happy Tuesday.
Can you guys see me?
Not yet.
How do I make that happen? Oh, Jesus, what the heck?
There should be like a start video option in the bottom left.
I cannot, Pierce. Mute start video has got excellent. I can't.
Oh, you got it.
There we go. Okay.
Because I'm in a meeting, that's why.
I don't believe my 18-year-old child needs my help. Eric, what's up, dude? Why are you on mute?
I want your attention.
You're not on mute anymore.
How you doing?
I'm good. How are you? Same here.
Yeah.
Welcome to the planning commission, Matt.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, welcome.
Glad to have you as part of the group.
Happy Tuesday, everybody.
Still feels like Monday to me, but why does my head look so big? I guess yours does too. But I do have a big head.
Well, I think it's just the four of us tonight, so.
Oh, really?
Go ahead and get started. Term has expired.
Can you let in all the citizenry, please?
Do we have anyone waiting? Things have disappeared. Now you're making me wonder what I'm not seeing. I don't see the options on my screen. Okay. Um, well, let's go ahead and get started. Six thirty-three, we're calling to order. Should we roll call? Eric, Kirsten, Capitello.
Al Chef here.
Lydia Herring.
Matt Greiner here.
New member. Edison comments.
Can't believe you guys didn't like flock my yard or something with flamingos or something.
Right? Yes, planning commission hazing runs deep, Matt. It's really.
I'm going to pull up the. I guess I'll make a copy of this agenda and. Do minutes through there.
It's up to you. The agenda is a PDF, so it's. Not going to change.
There's one already in the folder.
I just opened it up. I'll get in through that. I wasn't sure which one Kirsten was presenting, so if she's doing a PDF, then we're good to.
Yeah, she's presenting it, but if you want to jump into the doc, yeah, we're on it.
So six thirty-three PM.
Six thirty-three.
That's what will be no citizens comments.
Nobody on the line tonight.
Just so you guys know, if you want me to do anything on a computer, it's not happening because I have no idea.
I think we got you covered, Matt.
I'm double nickels now, and their computers weren't even around when I started in my life. Well, they were, but they weren't.
You're here for your big brain and your good looks. We'll handle the tech, okay?
All right. Thank you.
So we are, we can move on ahead to our next agenda item, Crafton Plan Commission roles. First item, we have a new member. Going to introduce yourself. It's good to have.
Absolutely. My name's Matt Greiner. Crafton resident for pretty much. My entire life, other than when I went away to college. Done a lot of development in Crafton, redevelopment in Crafton. I may. Own the circle in, but I'm also a contractor by trade. Done a lot, done several housing developments. Throughout the years and looking forward to trying to help craft and move into the future.
Cool. Welcome. Seems like you know Eric. I live on Hawthorne.
Oh, you're right down the street from me.
I guess.
Yeah, well, I mean, I live on the corner of North Emily and Crafton Boulevard where Hawthorne starts, so.
Matt's the flagpole on the corner.
Okay, yeah, yeah, giving you guys wood.
And the two, yes. Oh, yeah, that's right. And then, yeah, we have the two Goldens and so forth and so on, so. My house is not. We have, we're known as the skeleton house these days.
Right?
Because all the skeletons climbing up the side of it, corner Halloween. Yes.
Yep, we're pretty close neighbors. You can see your house out my window.
Hello.
I'm looking out my kitchen window now.
I'm not at the window, but. All right, well, welcome. Welcome. We also have one more vacancy. We've been. As a general, general rule, I guess, matter of order in all of our boards and commissions, the council has appointed a new vacancy committee, so they're. Trying to fill spots in all the vacant, all the vacant seats in our various boards and commissions, and there's still quite a lot. And also being better about being on top of when people's terms expire. So our fifth number, Rich, his term expired last. Two weeks ago, April fifteenth, I think, his term expired in April, and he did not. He did not choose to reapply for it, so we have another vacancy that has just opened up.
I don't know if this is the proper time to ask or tell, but. My wife is also interested in being a part of it, so I don't know if that's, you know, taboo, having. Family members, spouses on the commission, but she was interested in being a part of it, so.
Getting people involved is always good. I don't, I don't think there's anything against that. Having people in the same family or the same household, but we also don't, we don't handle the open seats through planning commission. They all go through the vacancy port, so she'd have to do the same application you did.
Right. I was just asking you guys' opinion while we were here, so, you know, to see what, you know, the thought process was before.
I don't think you're going to get any pushback. We're not a decision-making body. You know what I mean? In terms of, you know, relations and all that sort of thing, you know, it's, you know, wife, brother, uncle, cousin, whatever. Shouldn't matter, in my opinion, but that's why there's a process, so.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know.
Be great to have her, in my opinion. Great.
Thank you. Yeah.
She's been here.
She's been here since ninety-two, so.
So I did not know that we lost another member. And. I guess my question is, was. Was there any sort of a. Any sort of process, any sort of conversation as to why Rich wouldn't want to be a part of it anymore? I mean.
Um, that I don't know, but as part of the new process, the vacancy board was supposed to reach out to people whose terms were expiring, and so they did. And. Reached out to Rich, and he, and he has been very busy with a lot of other things, so I would assume that's his reasoning. But he was contacted, he was told that his term was expiring, he was asked if he wanted to reapply for it, and he apparently said he was not, he was not going to do that. He could have changed his mind. I don't know if he submitted something to the vacancy. I don't know if he submitted an application. I wouldn't know that.
Makes sense. I, I totally get it. I just, I, I hope. In consideration, I mean, the man's a pillar of the community. There isn't much that happens in Crafton that he hasn't had a thumbprint on, you know what I mean? So I just hope that. You know, whatever, whatever could be done, you know, even just, even something as simple as like an exit, you know what, once all the dust settles. We should kind of postcard a handwritten invitation to him to join one of our meetings. And just give his feedback as a sit, you know what I mean? Something like that. I just. Feels like it would be the right thing to do, to say, you know, we appreciate everything that he's done, and, you know, go from there, but I don't know.
I mean, feel free to. I've seen, he seems like he's doing well, and he's, he's got a lot of. Other things that he's got on his, on his plate right now. I did make sure that. He was contacted when his term was ending, so that, because I know there were a few other applications, and I wanted to make sure that he knew. That there was a new process and that he was contacted about his seat before.
That's great.
Before anything was just given away, and, and so they, they did make sure that that happened. But you want to reach out to him more? Go for it.
I didn't know that he was leaving. Yep.
That was apparently, yeah, his, that it's the new process, and I mean, technically, all of our terms expire at a certain time. We've just not always known. Or really paid attention or been reminded when they were expiring, so his was set to expire. And so we, we lost another, another plan commission member in the last month.
I, I don't know if this is the right theme of the conversation in terms of vacancy, but. When Olivero was on, he mentioned something that I've, I've longed for, for a while, from. The standpoint of the public to all positions, let alone appointed commissions like the planning commissions. There was supposed, he, he'd said that there was supposed to be. Like a job description, you know what I mean? Like an ask. Is that out yet? Are those out or are they on the website?
Yep, they're on the website.
Perfect. All right. That's great.
Yes, there's a description of the planning commission and all of the other boards and commissions.
No, no, I mean, in terms of the, not the board of commission, I think that's great. It's important, but I mean, in terms of, you know. The time commitment, what we're asking people to actually do.
That is out, Eric. You can go to the website. It's out.
Oh, well, you just said, well, you said, what you described, there's a description of the commission. I was just making sure that it's clear that it's. I'll go look at it.
You do that. Um, I wanted to also, since we have a new member on, spend a few minutes going over our resources. And I. Matt just got your email today, so I can follow up with these in an email, so you have them ordered, but. We do have a. Google Drive that we keep all of our planning commission items in.
Okay.
So you can see documents that have been shared over the past years. That is also where we put all of our agendas every month, and where we keep minutes, meeting minutes from each month. And other, you know, any other references. Sometimes things are posted there that we either do or share or talk about during meetings or other things that are just. Found by members that are useful.
Sounds good.
So for example. In recent years. And we're going to talk a little bit tonight about a few things that, that have been on the agenda recently. But we are, we have been going through a process to find a zoning consultant. The borough has been looking to redo its zoning along with Ingram. So the proposals are posted there, and the RFP is posted there. There have also been discussions in the past about. Some visioning workshops, workshops about various issues or areas that are concerning to residents. The planning commission has hosted some events where we. You know, we posted some workshops where we invite people to come and talk through those. And we have a specific topic that's highlighted, you know, beyond our usual agenda, so those recordings are there and the, the. PowerPoints or the presentations that were put together. There's also some information about, you know, various other initiatives that we've talked about in the past, and I had thought towards the end of today, we can spend a little time just reviewing. Some initiatives and talking about things we'd like to maybe talk about this year, but initiatives that the members of the planning commission would like to take on.
All right.
And then the other big resource to mention, and this is part of the goal, the mission statement of the planning commission is to uphold the goals of the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan is not on our shared drive, not on our Google Drive, but it's on the Borough website.
It's on the Borough website. I was reviewing. Some of that. After talking to Lydia, I know that that's a. A large portion of what's going on right now, and so I did do some. I didn't get, you know, I didn't get into the meat and potatoes of it, but I did, you know, do some overviewing of it. And. So I am from, I was familiar with it in two thousand seventeen, so, but I never knew everything about it, so I have been doing a little bit of work on that. In preparation for today, so.
I don't think any of us have it memorized, but it's there. It's a, it's a reference that we should be familiar with. You know, a lot of people tend to forget about those things once they're done, but that is the, the planning commission. Particularly, unlike most of our other boards, there, there are some that have specific legal requirements. The planning commission is one that is illegal. That is permitted per state law, and thus has some guidelines about what it is permitted to do, and that's one of the kind of founding mission. Statements for a planning commission is to uphold the comprehensive plan, so just wanted to kind of give a little overview of some of the resources that we have.
Yeah, that's great.
And I'll send you, send you an email with links to some of those, like links to.
Sounds good. Absolutely.
Kirsten, just a reminder, there's also the Google Drive folder. That's the shared one with Ingram.
That's right. Yeah, thanks.
Matt to that, too. And we should probably remove the old members, maybe clean it up a bit.
Yeah, that's probably, that's a good idea. Ingram. Has a planning commission that meets only quarterly, and they meet jointly with us, so we have our individual meetings every month, and then. Every three months, four times a year, they, they come and they join us. We have a joint Crafton Ingram meeting. Our last one was last month, so our next one.
And I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to stop you.
Oh, no, that's all.
When I was reading the comprehensive plan. And I just want to make sure if I was, because of what you just said, if I was understanding it correctly or not understanding correctly, but there is a thought process going on right now of having a joint planning commission?
There is.
A suggested piece of that, but it never came to fruition as far as a legally joint commission where we jointly make decisions. We. Right now, we have separate, we still have separate bodies.
Okay. But I'm saying, is that still a goal of yours?
It's not.
I don't know how that actually works, because we don't make. Finding decisions. We make.
Right, no, I understand, but is it something that you're lobbying for, for any reason?
Not really.
Okay, because you should just nix that before that ever happens, just so you.
We have.
Was in a joint planning commission at one time, and it was the worst thing that ever happened, because you had other towns that had, say, was going on in your town. And I understand we're working together to try to better the two communities. And, and, you know, and, and keep what we have, but also moving forward, but at the same time, you don't want anybody to have to. From another town to make decisions about your town. Very bad, very bad.
Yeah, I mean, because each of our planning commissions recommends to council, and the councils are different.
Oh, I know that. I went down the road of, there were supposed to be forty houses down in the valley about fifteen years ago, and they're not there because of the joint planning commission, but anyhow, go ahead. It's a bad thing.
We just have.
Some, some past feedback similar to what you're saying, Matt, and I think that's part of why that particular goal never really. Came from the comprehensive.
It was just something that popped out when I was reading it, and when you brought up about how they meet with us on a quarterly basis, I just, I wanted to voice my opinion on that now. Really bothered me.
Share news and updates. With each other.
Which is great, which I, I think it's a fantastic idea that you work together at, at, you know, certain points and certain goals and everything like that, but just my, my overall point is that. A neighboring town should not have any. Ultimately, any say on what that each town does. It causes too much confusion. There, because there's people that grew up here that live there now, people that live there that are here, and, you know, they want to talk about how, well, it used to be. Oh, that's where I used to walk my dog when I was a little girl, and it's, it's just not good stuff. It's bad.
Well, we don't have a joint planning commission. We have.
Well, I'm just saying, that was one of the goals of the comprehensive plan, and I just wanted to voice my opinion. It's not a good idea to. Continue to follow that, and the only reason why I brought it up is because you mentioned about jointly having meetings, and it sparked a thought in my head, so, sorry for going. You know.
Yeah, the, so I was on the steering committee for that, and the, I think the reasoning behind that was, was thinking that if both boroughs were willing to work together. We could get a lot more done, you know, there's a lot of synergy that can happen. The mechanics of that were. Satisfied by the quarterly meetings and also doing things together like grant writing. So we satisfied the, the goals of that. Other ways, other means than actually legally combining our, our planning commissions, so there's. And I haven't heard anybody. You know, on either side, pushing for merging since.
Enough said.
Since the comprehensive plan was created, so.
Oh, enough said.
I also wanted to touch on, Eric and Lydia know this, but for Matt, these are recorded. And Kristin was actually going to be posting these on YouTube. I followed up with her, you know, some of you who were already on the chain saw her request this week. The account was new, the Zoom account we're using is new, and it was set up differently, so she didn't have access to it. She has access to it now.
Great.
The settings were different, but I've gone in and I've changed those so that they auto-record and they go to the Borough account.
Perfect. It sounds like a good system.
The, the salient point, though, that I found amusing, is anybody who said that they happened to see the March meeting, for example, couldn't have. But soon that'll be all rectified. I just think it's funny that, should anybody have said, oh, yeah, I saw that.
Has somebody said that? I haven't heard anybody say that.
We do post all of our minutes once they're approved, but it was a, it was a new account. She didn't have access to it.
Right.
I did not know she didn't have access to it. Anyways, these are recorded, and they'll be going on YouTube.
Very well.
Our next item is the zoning project update. Can give a little background on that, especially for Matt. I don't know how much you're familiar with that, or you've been following it. Borough had put out. An RFP a couple of years ago, so it's been sort of a several years-long process with. Billy's various reasons, lack of, lack of. Political support, then there was a COVID, obviously, and then there was a decision to widen it and expand it, expand the scope to include Ingram, so initially. Crafton only, then it became Crafton Ingram, and we decided to go after a grant because the. Doing it multi-ministerially opened us, opened us up for this opportunity to get it funded by a grant. So kind of a long story, but it's been a few years in the works, and we re, re, reopened the RFP. In February. And have just gone through a series of getting proposals from several firms. We got three proposals. The planning commission talked about them at our last meeting, which was a joint meeting with Ingram, so all of the members between Crafton and Ingram talked about the three proposals and decided to. Go forward to interviewing all three. We had a zoning selection committee, which had three members of Crafton, three members of Ingram. No quorums, which allowed us to do interviews as private interviews and not as an open meeting, which is standard. And those interviews were held. Last week. Am I right on that, Lydia? It's been, it's been a very busy few weeks, and it took some time to get them scheduled. Those interviews all occurred last week, and. The selection committee had a unanimous decision. To recommend one of the three firms, so that that recommendation will be going to Crafton's council this week, and it'll be going to Ingram's council at their meeting in May. The firm that was recommended is ZoneCo. I know that doesn't mean a whole lot to Matt, but Eric, I'm sure remembers the three proposals, and Matt, the three proposals are all posted on the one, on the Google Drive that will be shared. If you do want to look at them. Um, but that's the big update is the committee did those three interviews, committee had a discussion afterwards, and we had a unanimous agreement between Crafton and Ingram members. So that's the recommendation that will go to, that will go to the, to both councils.
I, I know that both of you have put a lot of time, 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 more time into this, so congratulations that it's done well. None of the antics and craziness at the finish line, but.
Going to be a year-long process. But that was a little bit of background, and I wanted to see if there are any questions on that, and then I wanted to also give us the chance to talk a little bit about how we, as a planning commission, would like to see that move forward. There is going to be a steering committee. I think the planning commission can have a hand in how we'd like to participate on that, or guide it behind the scene, or guide it, you know, in adjacency. Or such. I wanted to make sure we had some time tonight to talk about that. So first of all, before we wrap up the background, especially since Matt is new, do you have any, any questions? Go more into the.
I'm excited about B.
All right, and then I don't know if Lydia, if you want to kind of launch off the committee participation discussion, because you had a question about that the other day. But I thought that would be a good thing to talk about tonight, and I'm sure we'll talk about it next month as well, and potentially the month after, as we like actually get this project going, because it does, it will take, I'm sure, a little bit of time to get it through both councils. But the, the consultant had suggested that they will have a steering committee of community numbers and potentially also be working with. For our staff and for our leadership, and all of that is a little bit flexible to how we would like to structure it. So I wanted to open that up to the planning commission and think about how we would like them to structure it. Do we want one or two members of the planning commission to be on the steering committee? Does the planning commission have another role that they would like to play with the planning commission? You know, like to be kind of the guiding. Entity. For the whole process. I mean, I wanted to kind of open it up, and I'm, I'm sure it'll be an ongoing discussion, but I think this is our chance to start. Start positioning. From the beginning, what role we would like to have for the planning commission.
I, I think that, that the timing is, is, is great. Well. The, the fact that matters is this is long overdue, so that the fact that it's moving, the timing is great in and of itself. But I think all of us are deeply interested in the body of this work. So, you know, I don't, I don't know, I don't, what I don't want to do is. You know. By comparison. Someone, Lydia, I think that your, your giant brain would have been very useful on the, the park plan. There are a lot of people involved in it, but, you know, et cetera. So I think that each of the, the people here. Have great things to contribute. To the, the zoning work that's ahead, you know, whether it's an advisory, being informed, doing some of the work. I don't know what that is, but I know that each of the people here on this call are very committed to getting this right. For our community, so I don't know how to, I don't know how to right-size that as to what would an ask be, Kirsten? Because I don't know what the, you know, what the consultant is really thinking, you know, are they thinking about twenty people, or are they thinking about three people? You know what I mean? Like, what, what's their. You know what I mean? Like what, what's their scope in terms of what would a committee look like for participation?
So I can talk through some of the notes I took when we asked that question. Would that be helpful? So we asked some of the questions that, that the planning commission had come up with, and one of them was, you know, what does your steering committee co- composition look like? And also just what is your community engagement process like? So when, when we asked specifically about the stakeholder committee, they said it's usually 12 people max. There might be a little bit of flexibility, just in that there's two communities, but they said it would be about one to one and a half hour meetings scheduled at convenient times for, you know, most if not all steering committee participants to attend every time. And they.
Weekly, monthly, some idea of what that is.
Um, that was.
You don't have to dig it out. It doesn't matter. It's, it's immaterial.
I don't know if we asked that specific question. I would assume monthly at most.
That feels right to me.
Yeah, I think there's something like that.
I think one of them said every other month, but I don't remember if it was that consultant and I don't have my notes in front of me.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't sweat that detail.
I know that, that consultant and at least one of the others, um, did, did express that there was flexibility that, that how they would put that together would be done kind of with, with how the boroughs would like to do it. So that's why I thought this is a good time for this commission to start thinking about how, how would we want them to do it?
Right. So.
Suggested that they might have, Lydia, you took notes on this.
Yeah.
Remember, um, like a focus group?
Yeah. Can I get to that in a second? Let me just finish. So, so they suggested that the steering committee itself have a diverse cross-section of community. So, um, maybe somebody that's a developer, maybe somebody that's a realtor, business owner. Suggested one planning commission member as a liaison and a council person as a liaison. But then to what Kirsten alluded to, they want, they want to have something called a working committee that meets once or twice per module. I guess they had their project, the way that they're going to walk us through the process is in modules. And so this working committee would be separate from the steering committee and that would be more people in administrat- in the administration. And also I, it sounded to me maybe more planning commission people and more council people. So it's almost like there's a steering committee that gives you wider input and then people more intimately meeting to get the logistics through and kind of hash out some of that stuff. Does that sound right, Kirsten?
That sounds, that sounds right. Yeah.
So it sounds like a whole lot of people with a whole lot of ideas throughout, they get to throw their ideas out there. And then we have a smaller group to cipher through all those different, sift through all those different ideas and to try to make them reality.
The, the working group, I think the steering committee is what the consultant will lean on the most, but the, what they described was that they wanted to engage planning commission and council. You know, early and often, basically throughout the process, meet with them regularly, talk through some of the, the different details so that they're brought along through the process and don't just hear radio silence for the better part of a year and then get done on like this document and then have to take the steering committee's word for it, that everything.
Gotcha.
Is good, basically. I, I think it's to, to kind of bring, yeah, bring people along, make everybody feel like if there's some major fight that's going to happen, you know, let's kind of hear, hear what people's issues are early. So we can resolve them instead of it being almost adopted and have somebody, you know, have a major issue.
Right. Alright.
With that said. Oh, sorry.
One of the things they also included, that was one of the things our, our committee really liked about them is their a, a clear approach to wider community engagement. That the steering committee would be kind of helping them to the temperature of the various issues in the committee or in the community rather. And help them, you know, be, be able to reach out to the wider community beyond that. But the, the steering committee would ideally not be, and they didn't necessarily say this, but I, I think myself personally, I liked the way they pitched it because of this context, um, that I was hearing from them. We've recently finished a planning process where the steering committee had, I think, more of a voice than, than the rest of the community. Because public engagement was not very thorough. Um, and I think their, their approach was to use the steering committee as a kind of a guiding force. To help make sure that they were reaching the ideas within the community, but there was going to be, you know, more extensive community outreach to members not on that committee as well, to hear from all residents.
So again, not, sometimes a mod is verbally, uh, what is the word I want to say? Expressive as I need to be, but ultimately the steering committee to me seems to be the people that are having pipe dreams. And then the other committee is the one that's going to reel it all in and figure out what it is, based on what you just said, Kirsten. Again, my example, that's right, to walk my dog and there was a chick, there were chickens there when I was a little kid. And so I think we should keep it a place where you can walk your dog and have your chickens. But in the reality of it is, is really it should be zoned R2 and someone should be able to put condominiums there if they want to.
I think the goal of the steering committee from, in, in general, even separate from ZoneCo is to get people involved that actually work with zoning. They'll, they're going to use the code that we're writing and give feedback on what, you know, the bones of it and how it would affect the different industries if possible. You know, you can still have a citizen on the steering committee that's not a realtor or not a developer. You could have somebody that.
No, no, but, but I, I don't know if you guys are understanding what I'm saying.
I think I'm understanding you because yeah, the, the working group with like Borough staff would be, deali- would include people like, like our code enforcement officer, to people who have to administer it to make sure that it's not just residents saying what they would like to see, but that there's administrative, an administrative side. So making sure it can be feasibly.
So what I'm getting at with this point is, is that we should definitely be part of, whether it's one person or, or the four of us or however many people at that point. We should be definitely a, a major part of the second committee that is making final decisions. And then I, I think we should be very strong, uh, have a really strong representation on, on, on the second committee. The first committee, I think, you know, um, you know, one person, you know, from the planning commission to help with, you know, taking our collective ideas of what we should do and kind of helping guide like those maybe crazy ideas that people have, um, or thought processes. But I think that, um, it sounds like, you know, the steering committee, uh, uh, cause I'm getting two different vibes from you guys. But to me, like the steering committee is someone who is trying to see what people want, would like. And, but when it's all said and done, the secondary, the second committee is going to be the one that's actually, you know, laying down the law, so to speak. You know, along with, you know, council's obviously going to have the, you know, the final say in everything. So I, I mean, am I interpreting what you guys are saying properly or am I missing a something there?
I, I don't know if there's a lot to interpret yet, because we need to, once, once someone is finally selected, sit down with them and hash out what we want these to be. I think there's, I think that's why we're having this conversation.
Okay.
We can still kind of decide what we want them to be. I'm sure they have some ideas, but we can shape it. And I think this is helpful to hear, you know, what kind of interest there is from the planning commissioners, where, where you'd like to be plugged in. And maybe our first, maybe one of our first steps is to get the consultant to have us sit down with the planning commission.
Right. And the ideas of where us as a whole and what you guys have felt, you know, prior to me being part of this is where we'd like certain, you know, areas to, you know, what direction we would like those areas to go. And so that we can talk about that first, and then it's almost more of a presentation thing to the steering group, and then the steering group can take it from there. But ultimately the secondary, um, committee is going to have the final say of sorts or the final recommendation, let's say. Yes?
Uh, we, we don't know yet, I, I think is the answer. We're, we're not super, it wasn't like laid out in the proposal, these two groups exactly. This kind of came out of the interview.
Okay.
And they were, you know, discussing how the planning commission is a great way to engage, you know, with the public and, and through the.
What I got out of it and what I've, you know, what I've seen in my own experience is that this can really be shaped by, by the client. So we should, you know, one of our first, once we have a consultant selected, we should be able to sit down with them and frame out what we want.
Okay. Sounds good.
Those committees be, so I mean, this is.
Sounds like.
Guys want.
Yeah. Sorry to interrupt you. It, it sounds like we'd be, am I hearing that right? We want to be part of the, you know, the process somehow, whether it's part of the steering committee or, or the working.
I, I think both. I think we need to be part of both. Why? I think one more than the other, but I think definitely both personally.
I didn't want to interrupt, but I, I give me just one minute to step away, but I just put it in there. I love the idea that we don't know what we don't know as this works out. But yeah, I think us staying engaged and keeping a voice here, I think there's a lot to contribute from this group. Um, so I, you know, I think it's, I love the conversation. Sorry, I have to step away.
Yeah. And one of the things that we could ask for, and, and again, we don't really know, we'll have to sketch this out. Because that, that, and every, every consultant had this in their proposal to some degree that, that how we would have Borough leadership and Borough, you know, involvement would be kind of, you know, co-led by how we want to do it. But one of the things I was thinking about is if there is strong interest from planning commission and also strong interest from, from Borough staff and other administrative people that perhaps we have, um, you know, a staff working group and a planning commission. Perhaps we ask our consultant to meet with the planning commission on a regular schedule. Um, so these are, that we can take to them when we have a contract in place and start to figure out.
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, and you don't, I, you don't know a whole lot about me, Kirsten. I mean, Lydia, um, you know, she got to, you know, interview me and everything like that. But I mean, I am a commercial developer, a residential developer. Um, and again, I can rattle off, uh, 20 properties in, in Crafton that I have either rehabbed and, uh, and done flips on and so on, so on. So, and I've also dealt with zoning prior to you guys even being mem- you know, even being part of, you know, Crafton's community. I have a lot to offer with all that, and that's why I'm being so vocal on being, that it's very important as a group that we're a part of that in every way that we can to make sure that it gets done right. Because if you allow people to interject their personal feelings, you know, and, and I gave you guys my goofy examples that I have come across over the years. It's great that they get to, um, contribute those ideas and thoughts. But at the same time, we're here for the better of the community and what's going to, you know, continue to grow this community so that our property values grow, but you know, possibly our taxes go down or don't go up and so on and so on. So those are all really important things that have to be taken into consideration. And with all that in mind, we have to be a large part of the whole thing. I absolutely, and you know, uh, on both sides of that fence, that steering committee, the, 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 the secondary committee, whatever. Um, and then I think you need, you know, I mean, I don't know if it's in his, his contractual obligations or not, but somebody like, you know, Doug Sample, who is a huge, um, I mean, the guy's been in business for 20 plus years now. And, you know, part of what he does is community development, um, as what he went to school for and whatever. But you need to have someone like Doug Sample being a part of it. People that really know, it can't just be based on opinions. It has to be people that know how to develop towns slash properties slash areas that are going to grow, um, our community. And so I think going forward, I know this isn't, there's nobody, uh, picked yet for this whole thing. But, um, you know, you got to put, you, you have to put your strongest people in position to make this happen. Because it dictates how everything's going to happen for the next 15 to 20 years. So, um, to give you examples where the family dollar is in, in the shopping center. Now I know there were a lot of people, you know, the cross from the car wash and the, um, Dunkin' Donuts. I know a lot of people didn't want that to happen back when it happened and it was probably before any of you ever even moved here. But, you know, that was zoned R2 at the time. You know, and so, um, you know, it had to be, you know, there had to be a, you know, whole process to get that rezoned and everything. But what better, I, I understand those people on Thomas Street, you know, uh, they didn't want it. But, you know, most of Thomas Street is now rentals. Okay? All the people have passed on, most of them that lived there since the 1940s and 50s, when that was turned into, um, military housing for people. Okay? Those people are the people that argued about it. They're all passed away now. And what, you know, the money that's being generated now, that was an empty field. And what's being generated from that now due to that, that it's a family dollar is huge for our community and we have to think beyond that and outside the box when we're, when, when this whole thing takes place. And that's why professionals, people that know about the business need to be part of it.
I like your energy and we're glad to have you on the planning commission. Uh, I think we have, you know, a sense of what kind of involvement the planning commission wants in the zoning. So we'll revisit this when we get a consultant officially selected and maybe have a, a planning commission sit down, be one of the first steps. Um, I'm going to move us on because I'm sick tonight and I really don't.
No, that's fine. I don't mean to go on tangents. It's just, I think that I've wanted the voice for so many years.
I get it. And I, I am just going to say, I'm going to brush us through this because I'm sick and I don't, I can't sit here.
Move on and I'll, and I'll keep my mouth shut the rest of the meeting.
I, I love going on about this stuff, but I can't tonight. I need to go. Do we have other, you know, questions though about the zoning update or are? Really, you're the, you're the new one on board, on board.
Kirsten, get the throttle down, get it moving, right?
Put it on.
Next update, I'm going to go super fast here because I.
Do it.
Agreed. Um, Parks Master Site Plan, this is a very quick update because we already heard it last month. Um, it's final in its pre-final phase. The next step is that it has to go to, um, it has to go to the state to be reviewed by the state. By the state signs off on it. It'll come back to Borough Council and Borough Council will, um, sign off on it. Um, so it's really, you know, it's basically final, it's out of our hands. Due to be submitted to the state. I reached out to the consultant earlier this week and they are going to submit it next week. Potentially this Friday, but they're waiting, um, for our council meeting this week, just to make sure that that is okay with everyone. It's ready to be submitted as soon as Friday. So it'll go to the state probably next week. And then the state may take up to, they said it is not uncommon for them to take two to three months. So it'll be back to be, you know, officially adopted by council. Beyond that, there's no other, you know, real steering committee or, or community engagement with it because it's essentially done. But our council president did ask for there to be a final wrap-up steering committee meeting. So the consultants is, is supposed to schedule that soon.
Right. I didn't know that part. That's great to know.
Yep. Yep. I just got an email today that they're going to be setting that up shortly. Yep, I just got an email today that they're going to be setting that up shortly. Um.
I might have mentioned that at the shredding event on Saturday.
Um, so other than that, beyond that, the, I've put an item on here for upcoming initiatives, we've been talking a ton about the zoning. Lately, um. As we were getting it through the RFP and the interviews, uh, we've talked a bit about the Parks Master Plan, which was not, it was not a planning commission. Initiative or a project, but we did have myself and Eric on the steering committee. Um, it's not not something that the planning commission had, you know, led the charge on, but. Um, we've been giving updates on it in our meetings in the past month, past six months. Um, but I wanted, you know, we have a new member and we've been kind of busy with other things as well, and now that. That a couple of those other things are off our agenda, I wanted to start thinking about what we might like our upcoming agenda, our upcoming initiatives to be. Um. I think we'll revisit this one in the next couple of months as well, because we will have an another new member joining us probably next month as well. Um, but in the last, in the last couple of years, we've had a couple of different workshops on topics that were of interest to the community. And we can consider what um, topics we might like to revisit or new topics we might like to add. Um, Matt, for your, for your reference, we had one that was on eco districts and that is an ongoing. Topic that the planning commission has been interested in moving forward.
I like it.
We also have had one on the Linden Street site because that was a big. Topic for the community to discuss for a while and we had one on the Crafton Street, um, the Crafton Boulevard. Uh, infrastructure work and the streetscaping that could go along with that.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So we can think about workshops coming up and then the second thing, I'll just list them both and then we can have open discussion. The second thing I put on there was something that came up recently through um council meetings within our our borough engineers. Um. People are starting to have more electric vehicles. Um, pop up in Crafton. Other communities are having this issue too. A lot of people who are charging their electric vehicles who don't have their own off-street driveway. Um, they park them on the street and then the cord has to run across the sidewalk. Um, so one of the things that that I was asked to put on our agenda that. It was suggested that this would be something for the planning commission to consider. Is if we would like to, as a group. Look at how other places deal with this and consider what kind of um. Policy we might like to to recommend uh, an ordinance that could be put together to address how electric vehicle charging will work.
Good idea.
It's actually, it's actually a really great idea because e- even though it's not has to do with an electrical car. Uh, my son, well, it used to be my truck, but it's now his truck. Uh, when he's home from college, he has to run a extension cord across the sidewalk to plug his diesel truck in. Um. You know, so s- same issue, different. Different, you know, item, but yeah, and uh, yeah.
I mean, a bigger issue is more people get electric vehicles.
Yeah.
You know, I think.
Ever even thought of it.
For us to start thinking about how we'd like that handled, especially as um, there have been discussions in council about. Um. Meeting with the cane light and potentially getting electric uh, vehicle charging stations put into some of the borough properties. So people could go and park at a borough space overnight and charge, which would then. Mean that they wouldn't need, if they didn't have an off-street space of their own or a garage. They wouldn't need to park on street and run a cable across the sidewalk.
No, I I've never thought of it, I mean, great, it's a great topic for discussion, never thought of it.
So there we go, two, two suggestions out there for us to talk about and I wanted to have some open discussion and then again, I think we'll come back to this topic too. So we can kind of.
Yes.
I I think um, ideation in general, just around the electrical vehicles, I think. I mean, quite frankly, that that becomes a workshop, right? Because as we become more educated is what others have done, we're not the only. You know, we're not the only pseudo-urban landscape that has um. Has to wrestle with the contention of, you know, not just, you know, I I live on the the back non-parking side of a street. Electrical vehicle for me means. Running that extension cord across the street, not a sidewalk, right? So there's a lot of, there there's a lot to talk about there and I think a lot for us to. Um, to to become educated around, you know, in the past, um, I have. Greatly benefited from the two of you in particular, um, in the little kind of. Ideation space of having a Google Doc to drop in links and. Things that you might be able to point us to. Um, what do you guys think about maybe starting a shared Google Doc? Where we can throw in some, hey, here's an article about what Brett Wood has done, here's an article about some town in Mississippi that's doing something really interesting. Or whatever, what do you think about that?
I think that's a good idea.
Set up a Google Drive folder.
Yeah, there's the folder doc, whatever, doc with links, I don't don't care what, but I really benefited from you guys. You know, the the brick streets, I went into a, you know, kind of a. Something I I find really disturbing about crafting and our lack of. Understanding the. Brick streets can be preserved, um, but the um, the fact is they need maintenance every ten years or so. Um, but the um, the idea of the return on investment and the amount of data that's out there. Um, that supports the, you know, pros and cons. Um, of it was all started from, I think, Lydia, I think you spoke to. I don't know, who was it, Wozniak or somebody like that that had some connection to Mount Lebanon that turned into the above, but about, you know, it was just a.
Yeah, and then I think Colton was kind of bringing that along, so maybe we can.
Right.
Touch base with him on where where he left that when he left planning commission.
That 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 whole idea, though, I think is um, it's it's really, I think it's really a great way for us to kind of become educated, we're all busy. But having a place, oh, here's some new stuff, that, thanks Kirsten, what a, what a great little. Little nugget of wisdom that article is or whatever, so. Um, but the workshops in general, I gotta say. Um. As soon as this kicks off, right? And we get a meeting and we talk to the the new consultant, the the zoning. I think a zoning workshop revisited. Now that it's live, you know, live and direct. I think that um, that could be a really useful thing, but it's probably the prevalence of the the consultant too, right?
I don't want to over, I, we are all very busy and I don't want to overload us on things that we are paying a consultant to do, but I do. Having some zoning, you know, some some extra zoning. Events hosted by the planning commission is a good idea and I I think as we, as we talk about these, though, we probably want to separate. For ourselves where we want to do a workshop, which is more interactive and where we want to do like a presentation.
Right.
Because when you're talking about electric vehicles, that's really not a workshop, we can gather resources, we can have a discussion, but it's not like we're. You know, letting people really work through all kinds of different design ideas, there's there's limited. You, there's only a couple of limited things you can really do and we're going to gather up some. Examples and maybe some like pros and cons and best practices and present them. Um. So I think there there's maybe two different kinds of initiatives we can do like that, some that are more gathering information, packaging it and presenting it. Um, to the public and to council and then others that are that are actually. Interactive workshops that. So they create a space or venue for residents to come in and work through ideas with us and. Be able to take all that feedback and present that to council.
It's great. You know, i- even the reaction of people, you know, uh, six thousand people, couple, couple thousand cars. Who who's thinking about an electric vehicle, right? I mean, like, just just to engage what this is going to look like in terms of the. Scope of what the borough is going to be dealing with.
Another thing that I heard from um, social media, and I don't know if this has been brought to any commission yet, but. It might be a good one to add to this commission's initiatives. Is on, there is interest in a dark sky ordinance. Pittsburgh has recently passed one, there is a lot of interest in doing something like that. And um. You know, that that is, I think, an initiative that would be, that would be interesting to look into to see what they've done and perhaps what other areas have done and then. You know, decide whether we think something similar or the same or slightly adjusted, you know.
Does that ultimately mean like shutting down the the streetlights and that kind of thing when you say dark sky, I mean.
It's a um, an ordinance that impacts the uh, the type of lighting and the level of lighting and how.
Gotcha.
Directed, so that, yeah.
I like the idea of just shutting the streetlights off, right, you know.
I I grew up around the airport, I'll tell you, they embraced this dark sky thing, I remember at at nighttime. As a kid, it was daylight out, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It was always daylight out and they they've embraced that, you you go out to that area now. And at nighttime, it's nighttime, you can see stars and you're.
That's awesome.
Your feet away from the airport, feet away, so.
That's pretty.
Difference, yeah, I mean, it used to be a bright and shiny thing you could see from space and it's. Now it's because they, the direction of it and the way that they.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty interesting stuff, so yeah.
Yeah, I I love that.
How about, all of this speaks well to that kind of a Google folder for upcoming initiatives and a kind of an ideation kind of doc. Kirsten, I know we spoke probably more than, you you're ready to handle tonight. You want to just agree to to maybe uh, create a a upcoming initiative spot on our drive? We can all feed in to feed from that and then uh, see where that gets us uh, in a month's time.
Sure. Sure, yeah.
Motion to whatever I just said.
I don't think, a motion for that, but we can second it anyways.
I thirded it. Whatever makes Kirsten feel happy right now.
That was the chicken soup over.
Teeth are even flushed, girl.
Eighty percent through this.
Flush and everything.
My daughter's been homesick all week and I'm pretty sure I've got whatever she's got.
Yeah, you you, you look good, but you can, your face, your cheeks are very flush. There's my son throwing water on me.
There you go.
All right, well, I don't want to cut us off as much as I wanted to go quick, we're on item G, I didn't want to cut off discussion if we have ideas about initiatives, but also, I mean.
I think that's, those things we can continue to build on and grow on and everything, I don't. It's.
Can I just ask if council can re. Consider putting out the press release now that the zoning project is going to be going forward?
Right.
Yeah.
We had last gutted it for the actual consultant name, but.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if if we want to wait until the councils, you know, formally. Bring one on, we could add Zone Co. back in or what, or whoever gets approved ultimately back in and. And issue it, I just don't want that to get lost, I think it's good to tout our wins.
I'll make a motion that we request the council put out a press release naming. Using the template you started with the consultant named once it's. Um, once it's through both councils.
Yep.
Lydia, I'll let you second that.
Second, thanks.
There you go.
That will also help with the concept of creating these um. Focus groups to, you know, the, just making the people aware that it's it's out there, yeah, we'll be reaching out more, but. It it puts it right, it puts it more out in their, you know, in their face right now that, hey, you know. It's going forward, blah, blah, if you want to be a part of it, you know, so.
You know, I guess going back to that too, and we we will be able to talk more about this once we have the consultant selected and we'll sit down with them, but. They had, they promised public engagement, they talked through various ways that they'll do that, but it's it's also very much led by what we want. And so I think this is a good time for us to start thinking about what. Not just how much does the planning commission or, you know, in what ways does the planning commission want to be involved? But if you have ideas for how you think. Public engagement can best reach the community, places they should advertise, you know, events they could connect to, those are all things that. Um. You know, will be helpful to suggest to them and. Help them frame out what their plan is that will be receptive to our community, so. Want to start.
Can I? I know we're trying to wrap this up and I'm going to ask a question, but was something like that, does it make any sense to try to. Target any particular social media type things or anything like that to try to. Um. Could identify the people that you were just speaking. Do you follow what I'm saying? To try to get people um, involved? Um, because we all know that's one of the, I mean, we, you saw it with us, Eric, we just went online and there wasn't anybody else involved, you know.
Exactly what I'm saying, if we think, you know, people will be more receptive to seeing things on social media. We should tell that to the consultant, bring, bring that to them and say, we want you to, you know, prepare more materials for social.
Let them do, which is a great idea.
Ultimately, that's what they're hired to do, that stakeholder.
Yeah, okay.
That's the value, but but we can provide ideas of, hey, go look for 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 willing participants over here.
Yeah.
Next door is a good thing for this, the Craft.
Right, we would have to give, we'd have to give them the the parameters to to reach out on, like, you know, to to. Get it to the people that we want to get it to, but make them do it.
That's exactly, I think, what what uh, will be really important for and, you know, and the steering committee and other other.
Yeah.
On that too, but yeah, telling them. They're not going to come into our community and know where people are most likely to get their news, we can tell them.
Right.
We we want you to be posting in this group, this group, this group.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe, you know, if it's social media, they may need to give us the materials so we can post it, so they may not. But.
Man, man, I'll 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 just.
Right, or we could tell them, you know, most people really look at the flyers on that church, so that is more important than social media, go put up physical flyers on that church. Because everybody's there.
Right.
That's what I was going to underscore, Wozniak actually took flyers to the churches, he was on the Parks Commission. And got people kind of interested, you you know, kind of doing some of the legwork, right, some of the dog and pony for the consultant. But he knew where to look, you know, he knew the churches and he knew the people. So, you know, those are the kinds of things that, you know, we can, you know, we can collaborate, coordinate and support the consultant as this kind of kicks off. Absolutely.
And, and in that same vein, just beyond what we're talking about with this consultant. Do we have any kind of budget for advertising, social media, is there, is, do we? Do we have anything like that?
That is in their budget.
Right.
Sorry, but what I'm saying is, let's just, let let's, and again, I know you need to go, but let's just go back to the. Parks Master Site Plan, okay? Now, sometimes I have my head in the sand and I understand that because I'm doing my own thing and doing my life and everything, but I had no idea about. And I guess my point being is, is, is there a way, whether it be social media or or whatever, to reach out to people. On a larger basis. In a different manner, because I know social media is such a big thing these days. And with that. You know, can we go to council and get some kind of, you know, minimal budget? To be able to advertise the different things that. We as a planning commission are trying to do, which, I mean, I understand, we we're. We're just a suggestive body, I understand that, but without people's input. You know. We're all going off of what we think would be best, so is there a way to reach out to these people? Uh, via social media, um, and try to get them, you know, involved and obviously that takes money, so can we. Maybe approach them on, you know, some kind of budget for some kind of, some kind of advertising budget.
I think those are things you can think about and put together and then take to council and request, I mean.
I mean, is it a good thought or a bad thought in your guys?
Matt, Matt, I'll I'll just say it's it's a good thought, I I'll jump in on that. We did, we did a couple of surveys, we had uh, over two hundred families. Um, respond to one of the surveys, which is a, which is a dent in Crafton, right, two hundred families responding. Um, with the the, we have not had a a budget per se. But I will say the community feedback that that I think we've all gotten, I know I've personally gotten. Of the workshops and the things that we have been doing, they are really in that marcom, marketing communication kind of vein. They were pretty well, you know, distributed in all of the the likely social media places. But I think you're on to it in terms of pressure testing, can we do more, can we get better? You know, one of the things that really disturbed me about the survey responses were, we got families and homeowners. We didn't get any renters. You know, and I don't think it, I don't think it's fair to turn a blind eye to somebody who chooses to rent in Crafton and say that they can't be part of the plan.
They could absolutely, those people have been here.
How do we reach that segment? Because they're not, you know what I mean, they're not on the. The 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 school flyers, a lot of these folks are, you know, they're not.
Mailing list and so on.
Right, 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 so yeah, I think we, in, as we go forward, that's a great thing to pressure test. And decide, is there a budget that we should go ask for? You know, I don't think that, I don't think that the council is going to hate us for asking.
And I think small amounts and I, you know, I can't, I, we have some people on council who might be more fiscally conservative, but a small amount. I think you'll get, you'll get support, I, you know, I would support it if we've got a small amount. That we want to put towards reaching people in the community for something important that's happening, I don't think we'll have an issue getting that. That we want to put towards reaching people in the community for something important that's happening. I don't think we'll have an issue getting that.
Mayor may not even, may not even ask, just.
Again, I have, I, Kirsten, I have to, I am sorry to keep apologizing, but I just, I need to throw this. Thought process out there of what I was just talking about in the same vein that's going on, so. My children, this happened to me on, uh, this is probably five, six years ago, okay? They were having a huge bonfire up at the school. Okay, ha, I had no idea about. I'm driving up there to pick up one of my kids from football practice, wrestling practice, whatever it was. And there's a, you know, a bunch of students down, you know, on the field. And I'm like, and I ran into an actual school board member and I said, what's going on down there? He said, I have no idea. And so I come to find out, I come home, I ask my kids, they're like, oh, well, that, there's a bonfire for such and such fundraiser or whatever that we're having. I'm like, well, I didn't know anything about it. So, long story short, I've been begging, begging the school district. To create a blast email that tells you about when there's a football game, a uh, girl's softball game, a boys' baseball game. Any of these types of things so that we can get more community involvement into the school district, so. My same, that's my, so my point being is, what I'm saying is, I had no idea about the park and recreation thing that you guys were working on, so. We need to figure out a real way to touch people and get them involved so that we can really do the job that we're supposed to do. All right, enough said, goodbye.
Oh, that's, that's true and I, I think the consultant that was the recommended one by the selection committee, if that's what goes forward. They, they had a lot of good, that, that's part of what they're hired to do and they're good at it.
Right.
Um, so they should be bringing ideas to the table, but we, we can certainly be giving them our ideas and our lists of, you know, where can you best reach people? So these are all, these are all great things to think about and great things to start assembling.
And I'm also just meaning for other things that we do over the course of the terms that were in there that are going on, you know, a way to reach the people, you know. So is it social media, is it, you know, somehow we get, you know, an email list, I don't, it would just be. I, I just, I, I feel so in the dark sometimes when it comes to things because they, well, it was on our website. Well, I don't go on your website, school district. I don't know, I don't go on your website every day of my life, I got things to do. But if I'm getting an email and I know what's going on, well, then, you know, if I don't want to participate, then shame on me. So, that's.
Matt, I will send you information about Savvy Citizen, which aims to do basically that, just the email blast idea. I don't know if you've heard of that, but.
I have heard of it, but I'm not a part of it, but then again.
Problem, Matt, you don't have Savvy Citizen, come on.
But it's better than nothing, at least it.
It exists, it's better than nothing, but it could be, we could improve on that too.
I'm trying to find things that aren't um, that have, that, to create a, a platform that has no. Political or, or any kind of situation through it, just other than, here, this is what's going on.
You, you're describing Savvy Citizen. It's, it's a little ugly, it's a little clunky. Moon Township, I saw a sign, they're, they're implementing, I looked it up, it's pretty slick, but it does the same thing. It's just a. School messenger style communication kind of a thing. Um, that, that it does, it does the job that it says on the side of the box, but that's not for us to solve, but um.
Right, so that's put out by like the borough secretary or whatever.
Savvy Citizen, there's, there's, there's a lot of, everything that you just said and asked for. Related is in Savvy Citizen. Tell your kids to do some work.
Yeah, well, that's what happens when you turn, you know, silver hair, you know.
Double nickels. All right, let's move on.
So we do the uh, review of March minutes?
Yeah, um, you, Lydia, you had a question about the dog run.
Yeah, was, was that you that seconded it?
That seconded it? Well, I motioned it, um. I don't know who seconded it.
It wasn't me.
Uh, the bottom line is, I, I spoke to them, I spoke to Wayne, I spoke to a bunch of people. Go pound salt when it comes to a dog run. The best thing we can do with GTRP, Kirsten Compatello, as you go to the meeting Thursday night. The best thing we can do with GTRP and Wade Fontana shook his head, yes, the best thing we can do it, is that, because it's. 90 million bucks last year was asked for, they were only able to fund like 15, not even. But.
The, the recommendation, the motion you made was presented to council at the last council meeting about the dog run.
Yeah, uh, and what, what I'm saying is, I learned a little bit more about it and GTRP. Where, w- we would just be a, we would just be a plain vanilla wrapper in a sea of white wrappers, you know what I'm saying? What would stand out? The, 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 there's 90 million bucks was competed for last year, 15 million bucks got awarded. Right, so it's a tough scrap to get that money. It's a good match. Matt, we only pay 15 cents on a dollar for this grant. Um, but what, what was, uh, what raised an eyebrow is the, 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 the interest. In the Clearview Trail, the Trolley Trail, because Pittsburgh got the investment on their half. It would be politically wise for us to scrap the dog run. Um, not go after the dog run, but to go after the G, go after GTRP with something as politically motivating. Like the Crafton side of the Crafton Trolley Trail that's being built by the city of Pittsburgh, you know what I'm saying?
That is what we are doing.
Good. But yeah, like I said, I don't know who seconded it, Lydia.
I think I might have, I just couldn't remember fully. Uh, there was, there's a different motion up ahead about using the rubric that I, I motioned and I wasn't sure who seconded it. Was that you, Eric?
Sure, I'm, I'll, I'm happy to second anything you suggest, so yeah, you can, you pu- put me down for it. And that's all, that's all water under a bridge anyway, so. So with that, we're good? Motion to approve March minutes?
I approve.
You have to recuse. Does he have to recuse?
I, I will second, well, I wrote them, so somebody else should.
I'll, I'll second them.
I think I fixed that up for both.
Looks good to me. I'm, I'm in a, I'm in a doc now, looks fine.
Okay, so you're, you're basically announcing that Trolley Trail would be politically better to apply.
For, for sure.
Politically, it would be better to apply for the Trolley Trail GTRP because the Pittsburgh city got. Already has money this year to put toward their side of the trail.
The council president in Pittsburgh, that was her pet project, that finally got funded. Blah, 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 that whole article that I put out there, I think the article should be in this document somewhere.
But council has already been talking about that with the borough engineers for the last two months, so it's been on our radar and we're basically reviewing the various projects. That um, are in the parks plan and then reviewing with the engineer and the, the expertise that they have. Trying to assess what the best chance we have, which item has the best chance of success. Um, and there hasn't been a final decision made, but it has been sounding like the, one of the trail projects. And most likely the Crafton one because we already own it, rather than the um, Creek one, which we don't fully own.
Right.
It's already been the, the topic of the discussions for the last couple of months, um, but it, it hasn't been finalized, that'll. It's due in May and so that will probably be voted upon in May.
Yep.
But yeah, I think, um, I think you're going to get exactly what you're asking for, Eric.
I, I just want the money, I, you know what I mean? That's all it comes down to. We got 15 cents on the dollar, you don't get that every day. It's a good deal.
Yeah, yeah, if we get it, I mean, it, it will be competitive, but that's why, you know, we're looking at which, which projects are most likely to succeed.
Well, I hope this is recorded because Wayne with his big old cauliflower nose, when I said it, had his head shaking up and down, so it seemed. Seemed like he would be, be behind it, but I can't put words into the man's mouth, so.
Pass that on, I'm, I'm all in favor of going after that grant and I, I think, well, I think. Others share your opinion, Eric. I don't think that'll be a tough one to get through.
Cool. All right, so we're approved. I think we are ready for somebody to take us home, right?
All right, well, we still have no citizens on the line. Um, so no citizen comments, should we go ahead and adjourn?
I second Lydia's motion to adjourn.
7:51, we are adjourning.
Good night, everyone. Feel better.
Hey, guys, thanks so much.
Matt, take us some chicken soup, see you later.
Hey, see ya, I miss seeing you walk into school.
Yeah, right?